All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is January ninth, two thousand twenty-three here at seven o'clock. Kevin, can you take attendance?
Nordike, Olsen.
Here.
Skelton.
Here.
Vasward.
Here.
Winiger.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Can you please join and stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First here on our agenda is if there's any visitors who would like to address the board, you may do so. We ask that you sign in when you enter the room and please list the topic. If you have not done so, please approach the podium. I ask that you refrain from listing any student by name or any personnel by name. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, and as a reminder, no action will be taken this evening. Are there any visitors? Perfect, we'll go up to our Tannager happenings. Lenny and Kim.
Hi, I'm Lenny, I'm Bill Berg. I teach at the high school. Kami Dibby is going to come running in, I'm sure. But we're here today to talk about an amazing opportunity that was kind of gifted to us something, as I was telling the people in the audience, that I've really wanted to do for at least five years. And I applied for the program two years ago and I found out in the beginning of January that we got accepted to go spend a week in Finland, visiting schools in northern and central Finland to experience what they have. And I, right away Kami is my partner in crime and so we put together a plan and actually spoke to Dr. Elvee and then the foundation for this opportunity to help us pay. And in all actuality, we thought it was important enough, if everybody said no, we would have paid for it ourselves, because this is something that could be completely altering for not just our school, but all the schools in our region. As I visited with Dr. Elvee was, we have, we all know about the COVID gap, but we also know that there are things in our system that we can do better. And right now in the world, Finland is doing everything better than everyone else. And originally, they designed their schools after us. And then about the early eighties, they made a huge shift in theory and they go to school less, they test less, they actually only take one test at the end of their careers. And they do so much more outdoors with all classes, whether it's a history class or a PE class or whatever it might be. And they only go to class for forty-five minute sections. Then they have a fifteen minute break where everybody literally goes outside. It's all levels, high school or to a commons area, and they take a brain break. They don't use, they don't have a lot of media at their school, so they don't have a lot of the things that we have. But they literally leave everything behind and what they found is when their kids return, they don't have to do get ready to go activities. They don't need a bell ringer, they don't need any of those things, they're ready to go. And therefore, that forty-five minutes is actual learning time. And I could talk about all those things about Finland, but one of the really cool things in just in the last two years is they took in about ten thousand Afghan refugee children. Within one year, they're learning at level. That to me says their cultures do not match and they found a way to get into their student learning. And I really believe and Kami believes we have to go see it in person. How did they make this happen? And the opportunity we're going to is called Full Steam in Olu, which is in like north central Finland, right on the coast, and we're going to have the opportunity to visit all levels of schools. We get to actually go to their steam labs, they have a Lego lab in the city of Olu. It's right in their city center, we get to visit that. We get to actually go into the classrooms and experience as part of this trip. And every day, it actually, now since we knew we were going Kami, and we'll both say it, it's exciting to come to school. We have this opportunity to make change and the greatest thing ever is our school supported us. They said overwhelmingly, Dr. Elvee said, "We can find money, let's talk to the foundation, we can find money." And it, while it costs a little bit, I think the gains in the long run could be astronomical, truthfully, because it reaches all levels of learning from the kindergartners all the way up to our high school seniors. And while we can't copy everything the Finns do, we can copy some things. And their ultimate goal in Finland and everything they do, they have two things, they call it sisu, which is a cultural phenomenon they adopted. I'm a history teacher, but after World War Two, they learned that they could overcome anything. They overcame the Russians, they can overcome anything. That became a new cultural part of who they are. But along with that, their question is this, why not try? And our COVID gap is here, we know it, so why not try? And this opportunity, I could tell everybody about it. I tell everybody I run into, I get to do this, this awesome thing. And we're blessed that we get to go and I know that we'll come back with a plan of things that we could implement right away and of things that we could implement in the long run. And I know that this is something we should be sending teachers to every year. It's just so, so wonderful. But any questions that you might have, I would love to answer. This has been, as I told you, a five-year plan of mine to make something like this happen.
Do you know if there are any other teachers from South Dakota going?
Not at this time. There actually only twenty-six got into this program. And like I said, I actually started applying five years ago, then COVID shut everything down. So I don't even know right now if there's any other US teachers, but they do go periodically. But a lot of European countries are sending their teachers as well.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for taking this initiative. Finland has been leading the world in academic achievement for years and it's time America caught up. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else?
I see Erica's back there, Mrs. Smith, but I was just at conferences here and I just brought up this conversation about her, so happy to have you do that.
Thank you. I just, we can't thank you enough because it's worth it. We tell everybody else, we did book a polar plunge, so we're going to get to do a real polar plunge in northern Finland. So that's part of the cultural exchange as well, because why not try it, right? Yes. Thank you, guys.
We can let her in later. Up next here, we have the approval of our agenda. Are there any agenda changes, Mrs.
No, no changes.
Thank you. I'll take an approval for the agenda. Shane, and second by Mark, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we have indication of any conflicts of interest for today's meeting. This is Rachel and I have none.
This is Carol, I have none. Shane and I have none.
This is Jake and I have none.
This is Mark and I have none.
Great, thank you. Next up here, we have our consent agenda. Today, we have our minutes from our December twelfth special and regular meeting, December twenty-eighth, December thirtieth special meeting, January fourth special meeting. Also for new hires, we have Brooke Bethold, Lunch Aid Middle School and a resignation of Mary Howard. Are there anything from the consent agenda you would like polled? If not, I'll take approval. We have Shane, Carol and Mark, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pull the same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we have under unfinished business, the elementary facilities review. I believe we should have John and Greg from TSP joining us via Zoom. So we'll let things get switched over here.
While Daniel's making sure all that's hooked up in the back. Daniel, if you want to throw on a couple of our slides, I'll wait for our guest to jump on, but I can start ahead here. All right, this is just basically a picture that was taken roughly a month ago. This is the site, I'm sure the guys will, when they jump on with the Zoom, will jump on and explain some more. But this is a picture we showed our staff and we're talking about in our community a little bit. This shows, before we got any significant snow, it shows the dry storage area and the connections to the building, which would be up in this area right here. This is what the masonry work that's been being done by the contractors. And you can see footings along here, which would be the, this would be the art room, music room right in this area. This wall down here would be the commons gym, the auxiliary gym area. And then this would be one of those first outdoor settings. They've got the outdoor, or excuse me, the outdoor footings of that first and second grade wing here. This section you see here that will be popping out of the snow in the near future is our hardened spaces. These are the spaces that would be considered our safe areas. They'll have obviously their own set of footings, cement walls and a cement ceiling. And that's where those flexible spaces are in that particular wing, flex classrooms. And those are designed to be our tornado shelters in the future. You can't see very well, but you can see down in this area here, this is the front part of the building of the, which would end up being, that'll be the JK kindergarten classrooms will be in this area where their footings. And eventually, this will all grow this way to the west and be another gigantic wing here. You want to go ahead and show the next one, Daniel? The one with the, there we go. This was taken about a week later. This is the same photo, except obviously we'd had some snow in between. It's just, we show this one just simply because it does a great job of demonstrating from the drone just how big this work site is. Of course, this is going to be, you can't see it very well, sorry. The buses will be coming in from the north on this road, as we've talked about. And right in this area will be that bus drop off that we talk about. This area here, and I apologize for the people at home that can't see this very well, but this area that we're highlighting about right in the center of your picture will be the hardened surface area. This is where there'll be some blacktop area for kids. And eventually, right about in this depression, right now there's a dirt pile there, but there'll be a depression where there'll be actually a place to drain water from the building. This is about where the playground equipment will be running in the near future. Well, a couple of years from now, I guess. Daniel, do we have our Zoom available for either Greg or John at this point?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to take your thunder there, guys. I'll let you guys go ahead and introduce who you are because we can't see you. But if you want to tell us who you are, then we'll let you guys go ahead and share. Oh, there we go, got you on picture now, John.
All right. I can go first, I suppose. John Reiser, project manager with Hausmann. Damon, I couldn't see what you guys were talking about directly, but it sounded like a pretty good update overhaul about what went on out there. Really, the past month has been a little bit of a slow plug. We had probably close to ten days that we were impacted by weather, whether it be actively snowing or scooping the snow and mucking the mud out the next day. And then that coupled in with the holidays just made it a slow go for the past couple of weeks. But looking to get a second concrete crew out there in the next couple of weeks to get picked back up with our footing work and back on track there. And then we just started implementing something that Frank had brought with him from when he was out at Rapid City. It's like a plastic tunnel, if you will, that he's putting over the foundation walls to help kind of heat the space for the guys working in there, but also to help the concrete cure a little better than just having a concrete blanket on it. And it's been working out pretty well for him, just the sun beating in on the space is really warming it up. He's thinking at least ten degrees warmer than it was outside, so it's been doing good for us so far.
Just, so John, not to interrupt, I did, Frank had showed us, or you guys had sent those pictures to us and we forwarded those onto the board, because that was some questions about how would the cold impact that? And I know you guys have been using heat blankets and glycol tubes and those tunnel systems now, but it seems to be doing its job.
Yep, we got one ground thaw machine out there right now. The next, we're supposed to have a second one show up this week, I believe. They're those big orange box looking trailers, just has, I don't know how many feet of hose it is for sure. I think it's around two hundred footer hose or better that has glycol in it that gets heated up when it, it just keeps running in a continuous loop. So you have hot water going through those hoses and pouring the frost out of the ground.
And also what we gave the board was just a quick, we gave them, John, an update from Blackhawk Masonry that they're doing some CMU wall work along that west side of the middle school and moving towards the east, or excuse me, moving west. So there's going to be some more tarps and more, I guess, scaffolding used there when possible to start seeing some CMU walls.
Yep, and looking to get another still delivery at the end of the month. And at that point, we're tentatively got Blackhawk bringing a second crew out as well to start in one of the hardened spaces, that first one to the north in that middle section. So they'll start on that hardened space, all the other guys continue where they're at.
Perfect. Any questions, I guess, for John's portion of this? Okay, Greg, you want to maybe jump in a little bit with some of the vendor talks?
Yeah, I'd like to, this is Greg, the project architect with TSP. And I guess I'd like to tonight just kind of update what the design team is actually doing during the construction phase and then maybe get into what some of the value engineering items were that we've covered before, but I'll just review again.
Okay, perfect.
So like the last few months, the TSP design team, and that includes the structural engineers, the mechanical, electrical, and then architectural interiors. You know, we've really been working on reviewing shop drawings and the products, the metals that come in. And just to explain what the shop drawings are again, you know, like during the design phase, the design team puts together a set of drawings, which are bid. But then during the construction phase, the suppliers, the vendors, the contractors, they submit the product data according to how they read the construction documents and specs. So they submit the product data and then they put together a set of drawings or shop drawings that the design team then reviews. So it's really those shop drawings that we're reviewing at this point. And the shop drawings are submitted kind of in the order of construction. So they come from John's team, from Hausmann. And like some of the big items that we've already reviewed and, you know, the products are showing up on site would be the seat, concrete masonry units, the concrete, the steel structure, the steel roof trusses. Those are the kind of structural elements which have already been processed. But then coming up here and what we've started to review is everything that kind of clouds those structural elements. And this includes items like the metal wall panels, the metal roof coping soffits, and then exterior windows, so kind of that building enclosure. So that's kind of what's been keeping us busy. And besides shop drawings, as Hausmann or the contractors have questions for the design team, they reach out to us with those questions in the form of a request for information and then our design team responds to that. So this is kind of the process over the last couple of months we've been working.
Okay, thanks, yeah, thanks Greg, that was good. Some of the things that Greg and John and the group has been helping with, of course, is they track all the things that are going on in the site, you know, they have the safety reports. I was kind of fascinated to find every time we go over and have a meeting, they can tell us what was done for that day, the cement was inspected. Every time a truck does cement work there, there's, a core is taken out and it is tested to make sure that it's up to standard or the steel rebar that's being used. The city comes in and does their portion of the testing and making sure that it's up to the specs and the standards that were written in the plans. If there's ever a duplicate or something that they want to try to maybe change for value engineering, then it comes to Greg and his team to determine if that can, that switch can be made. And sometimes it can and sometimes it can't, just depending on that. So sometimes we're able to save some dollars because some sort of another material can be used in that product or a different type of faucet, for example, or something that they're looking at in the shop drawings. So it is kind of fascinating to see the work that's going on behind the scenes. We know what the temperature was when the workers were there, we knew who were on site, we knew what time they got off, we knew if it was rain or snow or foggy. So it's been a real fascinating thing and when we meet on our meetings each week, we've, these guys tell us those types of job site, I guess, things so that we're kind of in the loop of what's happening. So John or Greg, anything else to add before these guys have any questions for you?
I guess, yeah, the only other item I'd like to add is that, you know, there really haven't been any changes to the plan, there haven't been any reduced spaces or plan changes. So just important to note that, that we're on track.
I think on your facilities update, did you want to say anything about the sales tax rebate?
Yep, you bet. So basically, in our board report, you know, we went, I had given them the five-week plan about what Suter's doing with the plumbing, Pullman is doing their dirt work continuation there. Thompson Electric is on site with their rough-ins for electrical and RJ Tide continues to do their cement work. A couple of things that are still in the loop for our elementary project, it really has nothing to do with the construction, but more what's happening behind the scenes. We're still working with the city to work on a sales tax reduction or rebate. In fact, I'll be meeting with the city council later this month to discuss what that rebate could look like. And our goal, of course, is to get at least the amount for the building permit cost, which is a little over a hundred thousand dollars there. So that will be something that we'll be working out and trying to get some partnerships with the city on at near the end of the month. We continue to have our discussions with the Boys and Girls Club about Austin's viability for them and use as a potential site in the future. The Boys and Girls Club will be meeting in the coming week, but one of their interests is to finding out from an outside evaluator what it might be able to be, what it might cost if they were to take over that building and its projected life for their facility, similar to what we did when we studied it for an elementary school versus building a new one. So that is continuing on. And then, of course, we're continuing our talks with the city about the possibility of Jolly turning into a TIF district for housing development in a potential park. So those are all side conversations that are happening with the facilities and the groups there. Kind of, I guess, along those similar things, just for the building committee's discussion is we're finally getting our work done on the unisex bathrooms at the high school. That was slated for beginning of school and it started by Christmas. So we're getting started on that and we've got Greg involved in his group from TSP to talk about the footprints of restrooms at the middle school, what unisex bathrooms could look like there without a redesign of like changing the footprint, but really just using the existing space, similar to what we saw at the Associated School Boards this fall. So just some other things happening in the building construction world for us, so. So that's all I had for the report. I don't know if you have further questions for these two gentlemen or not.
Anything for John or Greg? Thanks for joining tonight via Zoom.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Maybe go off agenda here, but I see Kami walked in. Is there anything you want to say on your way out? You came all this way, we could hear from you for at least two minutes, three minutes. If you want to come to the microphone though, so our lovely public can, you can keep your coat on. You came all this way.
It is actually a Scandinavian coat. We are just thrilled about this. We honestly haven't really, oops, hard of course today. When we first signed up for this experience, it was, I don't know if I want to say a whim, but it was one of those things like, eh, we might as well sign up, you know, what's it going to hurt? And then kind of promptly forgot about it. And so when we found out before Christmas that it was a go, I thought, oh goodness. And then at that point, it was, we might as well ask. You know, we kind of felt a little silly and I think other teachers in the room and listening will understand, we don't do a very good job of asking for help. Sometimes we just think we can do it ourselves, but we thought, well, this is something that we have been interested in a long time. We presented to the staff, we presented, well, first of all, we had done the book study on the Finland concept and that's where we really got kind of hooked. Then we presented to the high school staff, to the staff meeting. Then we presented last January to, oh, it was the in-service, what do we call it? Smorgasbord, that people could choose different topics that they wanted to sit in on. And we had such a good response from the people that were in there. Pretty much everybody who hears about it loves the idea. So we thought, you know what, might as well just go talk to somebody. And Lenny had talked to Jason Huska and I stopped and I talked to Mr. Fry and they were so supportive, so it kind of bolstered our confidence. And then we went and talked to Dr. Elvee and he was absolutely supportive and that really made us feel good too. It feels good to be supported and it feels good that people trust us to go and find out and bring back something hopefully that will be beneficial for everybody, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing your recap soon. Next up here under unfinished business, item B is a COVID update.
Yes, that was in your board packet as well. Last week, we had two cases of COVID within the district. And pretty much like par for the course, it seems like most people are getting seasonal flu than anything at this point, but everybody seems to be happy and healthy at this point. We're just doing our thing, so.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to new business. We have items A through E and I believe we could do it all through one motion. So we can first start off with approval of the beginning and ending dates of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And per policy, we have to have those two dates set here in January. So if you want to review a little bit about kind of the thoughts of twenty-three, twenty-four?
Absolutely, thank you. Basically, before the board is a mirror of this year's calendar. So we have a start date of August seventeenth with students and we have an end date of May seventeenth. And so right now, we've presented this calendar to the staff and just asked for any input. So we've got some things that are moving around in the middle, but we've kind of settled on homecoming week and parent teacher conferences at this point are going to be very similar to they were this year. Where we put our staff development days are going to be moving around a little bit. But in the coming months, we'll have that finalized. Obviously, we'll have this before the end of the year, but right now, if you're basically a mirror of this calendar, in-service days prior to the staff reporting, our students' students' reporting, and then a start date of August seventeenth and date of May seventeenth.
How do we get to a seventeen and a seventeen for start and finish?
We planned that hard.
Okay, yeah, that worked out well. I appreciate it with all those that are making plans already. I know I had somebody ask about it just this week because they want to take a cruise in August.
Yep.
So August seventeenth, plan that for two thousand twenty-three. Next up, we have approval of administrative intent to rehire.
Yep, at this time of the year, we typically have discussed a little bit about the rehiring administration. Everybody's been evaluated at this point and are in good standing. Obviously, there'll be final documentation, evaluation and negotiations throughout the rest of the spring like we do with all of our other staff. But at this point, everybody's in good standing.
Great, thank you for that review. Approval of our snow days for this current year, so maybe next year's May seventeenth won't be the same.
Right.
Based on snow days, but tell us kind of what you're thinking here for makeup of the November twenty-ninth and December fifteenth snow days.
Last month, we had only one day to consider, so we brought our staff back on May twenty-second was our staff work day. Now that we've followed into two days of students missing school, potentially missing more school in the future with it only being January is, you know, is out there as a consideration. What I would recommend is that at this point, we advertise that we're bringing staff and students back on May twenty-second, twenty-third with the thought that if we miss another two or three days, we could have a completely a full week afterwards. Now, we have enough hours in our calendar built in that we wouldn't require that. So if we happen to have a great spring and we don't want to bring students back for a short week, we could cut that off and at this point, next month or the following month, say, you know what, we're going to just bring staff back for those days and we're not bringing students back. But I would like to say at this point, because we don't- But I would like to say at this point, because we don't know what the rest of the year looks like, that parents should be planning for their students to return on 22nd, 23rd. That way, they're not making vacation plans that week of school. We still have state track and some other school business that last week of May anyway. So it'd be my recommendation that we inform staff and students, we're coming back on the 22nd, 23rd. And then if we happen to have a great spring, we can reconsider whether we need students to come back in May, 22nd or 23rd. If that's okay, that's, that's what your motion would allow us to do.
Any questions particularly on that? We do appreciate the moisture, though.
Absolutely.
Approval of the adult volunteer, we have one for a boys basketball. And then item E is report on the annual report that I believe was published in November, maybe?
Yes. Daniel will get that up, and I won't spend much time on this because this annual report has already been given to groups publicly. I've used this as a talking point when I go out to different clubs, but, and it's also been published in the paper. But if, Daniel, if you just want to scroll down a little ways there till the first little bit of data if you can, what basically our annual report does is gives a snapshot to, to the, of the entire district to our public. It has things from our snapshot of our geography a little bit, talks about our size, about our free and reduce numbers. And that free and reduce number, at the time of this report was about 32%. And it varies a little bit depending on the time of the year. It also shares the fact that we transport about 300 kids a day throughout the district with our buses, talks about our attendance rates, average class sizes and things like that. In that large section of black there, it talks about all the great academic and extracurricular activities that our staff guide our students through. About halfway down there on the left, it talks about all of the things that our graduating class of 22 did. We had some excellent students with Regent and Opportunity Scholars there. It talks about our staff, about average staff of, of teaching experience of 17 years. We've got a great variety of new staff, veteran staff, and, and 17 years of, of average attendance in our district is great. And probably most impressive is the fact that 51% of our staff hold advanced or master's degrees, which again, we feel is an attribute to our students in our district. And then throughout the bottom there, it gives a little bit of a synopsis on our career technical education classes, as well as the district finances there. Reports to the budget and the expenditure list. And once again, when I go out in public, I obviously share this in much greater detail and take questions on that so our folks at home or in those businesses can ask questions. We'll go on to the next page then, then Daniel, if you would please. Basically, just a revision, a reminder of our mission and vision, a statement for the district and, and our specific class numbers on the far right there. The big, the big thing of note there is our kindergarten class, sixth grade class and ninth grade classes are our biggest. So we've got big classes, at least one big one, floating through in every one of our buildings, which is really good. And of course, at a total district of 1,390 kids, up 45 from this time last year, from the start of the school year, which is outstanding. That big box in red there just talks a lot about some of our partnerships and all the things we're thankful for because without our parents, without the groups that we partner with and all those extra experiences that we bring to our school, we'd be a pretty average school. But because of the groups that are listed in that red and many others, we're blessed to be able to offer a rigorous curriculum and a variety of things for our kids. The section in black there you see on your right is just a breakdown of our, of our team, basically from our bus drivers to our coaches, to our lunch program people, and of course, all of our teachers and, and our support staff within the district. And then as we get down to the bottom, it just has some actual graphs and pictures that give a synopsis of the district from, on the left side there is our district dashboard, our student achievement numbers there, district averages and how we compare with the state. The, the right side there, the, the pie charts show us where our money comes from and where our money goes. And obviously, we're a kid business or a people business. Most of our dollars are funneled through salaries and benefits, of course. And the bottom there just says a, another visual of our increased enrollment over the course of 15 years. And that's bucking the trend in a lot of schools in South Dakota, so we're pretty blessed to be in a spot where we've maintained or grown steadily for the last six years, which is pretty nice. It helps us keep and maintain the things that other districts are losing. And that's, we're really grateful for that at this time. So I could take specific questions, but this is really the kind of talk that I go out and give in the community several times a year, and it's a good reminder to the folks of what their tax dollars do for us. And so, once again, we want to thank everybody for the opt-out that we have, for the bond issue that we have, and for supporting our, everything from our fine arts to our, to our activities and athletics, so.
Thank you for that annual report. Are there any questions?
One question. Where's this document located if the public wants to take a look?
On our website. Now I know exactly which part of our website, but I'm sure it's under the board tab most likely. So it's, yes, on our website. And of course, we have these documents anytime anybody would want a paper copy like they just saw, they could come to our office and we can get them one. Thank you.
Any other questions? I would take a motion to approve items A through E. So moved. First by Shane.
I'll second.
Second by Jacob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pole, same sign. Motion passes. Moving along, we have our reports. We'll start with you, Mr. Elvey for LV for superintendent report.
You bet. We just, of course, our general thank yous here at the beginning. As usual, every month, I wanted to thank the folks that helped do some things for our district. Dollar General Dollar Tree here in town, new business located on Cherry Street, gave us a donation of batteries for our promotion they did within the, within their building or within their business. And so every one of our schools got a very nice generous box of batteries, and we have a lot of devices that need batteries, so we were thankful for that. Of course, we want to say, thank the city employees for their great job of snow removing around the city and especially around our school. They've been very, very helpful to keep that up. Of course, legislative session starts tomorrow in Pierre, and we have met with our legislators, both the school board has, as well as the administrative team. And we will just want to continue to have strong advocacy. It's going to be a session where there's lots of stuff that might come up on the spur of the moment. Some is already out. You might've seen some of the things in the news that are coming, but often they'll be calling and needing data from either school board members or, or school folks, and we'll be happy to do that. But things that will, that we're, that are going to be out there facing education will be things that we typically see, which are charter or homeschool, homeschool funding bills. Those, while we're very supportive of alternative forms of education, we don't value anything that takes away dollars from public education, as you can imagine. So our goal is to continue to promote public ed and, and support the things that support our kids in our community. The Education Committee meets every morning at 7:45, either at the House or the Senate and, or Senator Davis is, from here in town is, is on, on the Senate Ed. And of course, Mike Stevens from Yankton is on House Ed. So we've got some locals in the area that are easy connections for us. It is budget season at the district and we're working with finance and both negotiations team and finance team to talk about that. So in, in coming months, we'll be, we'll be developing a plan for dealing with student numbers, state aid where that ends up landing from the governor's budget and, and keeping the board involved with that. We have sent the invite to our VEA that you, your, of your, your wish to get together in the coming months to negotiate faith there. Our in-service last week was productive. We ended up having to cancel our breakfast, which was unfortunate because the staff get a breakfast the administrators typically make, but we end up starting school late that day due to the weather. And so we end up cutting a couple hours out of our in-service time, but we did get our school calendar reviewed. We did talk, do a little staff mixer, kind of get to know you type of thing for our staff because not all of our staff work in the same building. We discussed the new elementary school in some detail and we reviewed the, it starts with attitude. That was our guest speaker from the fall with Mike Oster when he came to town. So we reviewed some of those and then our, our staff had the rest of the day to work in teams or on curriculum or in their rooms preparing for second semester. Building updates, we gave those already. We are working on the lighting project for the theater. That's the next big thing that's coming up. Our lighting project in both the middle school and the high school are probably three quarters finished. Ran into some supply issue, things, issues there that we're dealing with and, and our vendors coming back to do a walkthrough and visit that and find out what's not done and what needs to get finished yet. So we hope to get that done. Another summer project that somehow bled into fall, bled into winter. So it's unfortunately the state of our, our world these days. Our Boys and Girls Club has been doing exceptionally well again this fall. One of the things that's growing from that is the fact that they've, are going to expand their offerings. They're going to have a preschool before school time so that students, parents that might need to go to work early can drop their students off at Jolly. It does cost $90 a month for that service, but they, at six o'clock, they open and at eight o'clock, they would drive the kids over to, or we would drive the kids over to Jolly if they were, happened to be a Jolly kid. So that's just a, one of those things that came out of our parent survey a few years back was the need for before school care. And now our Boys and Girls Club is going to solve that for us. The second thing that's coming up is in, working with Mr. Frye, the Boys and Girls Club will be exploring the opportunity to have an after-school tutoring session available at the high school, similar to what they have at the middle school currently. So the details are being worked out and assuming that that can all be done in the near future, that'll, that'll take place. So that's an exciting opportunity for our high school kids and their parents who might need some extra tutoring. The before-school program will start at Jolly on January 20th, coming up here in the next couple of weeks. Just a couple of reminders, of course, our, our board meeting next month is on Monday, but then, actually, February and March is on a Monday, but in April, following Easter will be a Tuesday night meeting, April 11th. Our December one child count was finalized today. We had 230 kids in the program. That's up about 40 kids from this time last year. So we've, we've grown in our, our needs as a district and now we'll be getting compensated for that number next, throughout the next year. The sped, sped funding is always a year behind in that case. And then finally, our early childhood program at Austin has increased as well. And of course, we have no, no more space to add classes at Austin. So what Ms. Chandler has done in working with Kim and with Jennifer has expanded her own program to make it into three sessions a day versus two. So she reconfigured her schedule to allow for her to start teaching right away at 8:15. Otherwise, she was teaching closer to nine is when she, we eventually got those early childhood kids in the building. And, and then of course, with the breaks and the other things, she was able to kind of narrow the focus of those periods and break that class of 18 down into three smaller sections, which was outstanding thought on her part. And of course, Kim and Jennifer thinking outside the box, found a way to help serve more kids without unfortunately having the extra teacher or the extra place to put these kids. They just came up with a solution. So this has been a, the first day of that today. So we're going through the transportation, trying to iron out details with that, but I wanted to commend those guys for thinking outside the box and serving kids well for the district's earliest learners. So lots of good news this month.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to school board updates. I think maybe we'll start with Shane. I think Daniel maybe has some slides to pull up. I'll let Shane kind of take us through that.
Yeah, so we're just going to show like big highlights of the, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't put the slides in the slideshow, so Daniel's only got this one left.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. So Daniel, you don't have that slide to place onto the, onto the, I just realized that.
Do we want to wait till next month then?
We, whatever you feel most comfortable with, since I didn't get you your visual, I don't know if you can explain it very well.
Yep, yes. Yeah, so we'll, we'll perhaps provide the visual next month and we can say more. But I will say that we, we were able to successfully complete the staff and teacher survey in December. And so we had a fairly good response rate. We had about 95 responses across the entire district. And we asked a variety of questions that had to do with their experience working within our district, their level of support they felt from their building administrators and from district administrators, also the level of support that they felt from the school district. And so it's more interesting if you can actually see the data and see the improvement. So we'll hold off on that. What I will tell you is that pretty much across the board on all of the questions that we asked, where we had similar questions in last year's survey to this year's survey, we revised this year's survey instrument quite a bit so that we could get more information, but we did have some common questions across. We saw improvements. We saw increases in satisfaction and increases in agreement across a number of different metrics. And so we'll hold off on any more details until next month so that you can see some of those gains and you can see where we're doing well and where we have some room for improvement.
Yeah, my apologies for that.
Do you have any other committees that you have an update on Shane while you're green?
I don't think, I don't think any of our other committees have met, but the Policy Committee is meeting next week with our, with KSB and our first meeting for our policy overview.
I can share a report from our Public School Foundation. We've heard a little bit earlier from Lenny and Kami, and they're supporting some of that trip. Some other things that the foundation is supporting, are supporting is a new visual media and marketing course that is being offered starting this, starting now. It's an entrepreneurial course in which students can run their own business by designing, producing and marketing items. So that is something that the foundation has helped support. The startup costs were about $25,000. So that is made possible through a grant received for that program. An additional elementary mobile STEAM lab was approved by the foundation, $13,600 grant funding that was awarded to the foundation. New hygiene corner program is getting started. Meal assistance program has helped some students in our district. Dual credit program is being used again this semester to help support students taking dual credit classes. And there've been many in the community who have generously given to the Angel Fund. And that fund has supported students with coats, hats, snow pants, mittens and funds. And it's used and the foundation has refunded those funds in the different schools. So thanks to the foundation for, for all of their work in supporting our district.
Mark, Jacob, anything? I think finance and negotiations are meeting here upcoming.
Yep.
Perfect. And then Boys and Girls Club, you gave the exciting news and just encourage parents to look into that morning option if there is a need for that. Anything else for anybody?
I'll throw one thing out there. A little over a month ago, I was in a meeting with the Associated School Boards on promoting public schools. And I thought it was going to be one of these informational meetings. Basically, it was a brainstorm with a very slow start. And we started sharing what our districts were doing to promote the schools. No one was really satisfied too much about what was going on, and so we started trying to kick around some ideas. Somebody said we should publish stories. And you know, I thought about that. I've spent quite a bit of time wandering around our school buildings and I've witnessed some absolutely incredible people, teachers, kitchen staff, you name it. And so I thought, well, why don't we share that information? How special our people are with the community? So I contacted Dave Lias and he loves the idea. So take a look at the plane talk. You should see something coming soon.
Speaking of my friend Dave Lias, he's texted me wanting to know if it's on YouTube. So Daniel, maybe we could get it on live stream here. Thank you, Mark. Those impact stories are great, so I appreciate it, Dave. We'll move on here to financial reports. Kevin?
Report would be in your packet again this month. I guess the only real thing that I wanted to highlight this month is on our special education fund. This is one that if you've been tracking this for the past year, you know, our fund balance looks like it's been lower and lower as the year has gone on when you compare it to the previous year. Now we finally balance. Now we finally balanced that out. It's one that, you know, the special education fund, I always say, is one that kind of ebbs and flows based on the timing and the way that the state aid is calculated for it. So now you're going to be able to see that tick back up a little bit. And as Mr. Elvey mentioned here, with our additional students, once we get into the next fiscal year as well, we're going to see some additional revenues there, so some opportunities in that fund, and hopefully continue to add to that as we close out this year.
Should be able to see, I think, the funds on page 34 through 47. Are there any questions for Kevin? Not? I can take a motion for the funds and claims. First by Mark.
Second.
Second by Carol. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion passes. Look at that. My mother-in-law asked how fast the meeting would be tonight. I told her I'd drag it out as long as I could. Just joking. So do we have any future agenda items here for Mr. Elvey?
I will present on the survey data next month.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else? Maybe we can put Mr. Elias's story up next month, too. Perfect. All right, if not, our next meeting will be here February 13th. When we're looking ahead to April, too, do note that with Easter, that does fall on a Tuesday looking ahead. So there is no need for an executive session tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn. First by Mark.
Second.
Second by Jacob. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion passes. Have a good night. You're welcome.